Good evening, and welcome to the Public Safety Subcommittee Meeting. I'm Counselor Caulfield. To my left is Counsel Frank DiCotto, and to my right is Counsel Rodney Elliott. We also have in attendance Manager Lynch, the Librarian of Pauled Memorial Library, Victoria Woodley, Solicitor Chris O'Connor, Counsel Rita Mercier, Counsel Joseph Maldonza, Deputy Superintendent of Police Deborah Frigill, and we also have some neighborhood representatives, Cal McCarthy, Anne Marie, and Bob Page. And if I forgot anyone, I know Mrs. Simpson, you have a Board of Trustees. And the purpose of this meeting is to discuss the report we received from Solicitor O'Connor pertaining to the proposed sex offender ban for the Pauled Memorial Library. We have the report before us, and this meeting will adjourn promptly at 25 past 6:00, not a minute later. And if anyone who wants to come to the podium and speak, it has to be specifically on this subject matter, on nothing else, just this matter here. And I would like to open up the meeting by asking the manager if he wants to give an overview, and then ask the librarian what policies are in place now, and how we can improve those policies and make it safer, not only for the citizens of Lowell, but for the children of our city as well. So I am Manager Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you indicated, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to go over the solicitor's opinion and report, and we welcome the opportunity to do that. The Solicitor and members of the Law Department have done quite a bit of work over the last couple of months on this issue. It is a very hot topic here in the city, as well as in other locations, and there've been court decisions that, obviously, we've been trying to track down, and there've been even recent court decisions within the past week that have relevance, but obviously aren't included in the report, but that we think, you know, play some role here in how we address this. Ms. Woodley can certainly speak to the policy directly, but I will say, as I've indicated in the past, that we do have a practice, a policy in place in the Pauled Library, similar to that which exists in other libraries, whereby people that come in that are known sex offenders are monitored with their activities in the library. If they come in, they are watched carefully, they are kept away from certain areas of the library, and that if they become, shall we say, routine visitors, we have on occasion called the police to make them aware of their presence. In that way, we feel that we're being diligent in ensuring on a proactive basis that the library remains a very safe place for the patrons. And I think the evidence speaks to the fact that the Pauled Library is a very safe facility, and one that the citizens of the city can feel comfortable using on a regular basis. We do, though, get the motion by Counsel Elliot that was passed on by the City Council to the manager and to the city Solicitor to ask that we look at strengthening that in some way to ensure that, you know, that even more precautions are taken. This, of course, was in response, I think, to the fact that there was a sex offender that was utilizing the library, that was -- had a warrant, there was a warrant out on another matter, that he happened to be in the library, and it raised the issue of, you know, should we be taking more precautions? So the city Solicitor has done quite a bit of research over the last, as I said, over the last couple of months, looking at a number of court cases, one that went through the federal courts involving New Mexico, what relevance that has to any policy that we adopt. Also spoken to some other communities here in Massachusetts that have adopted policies. And our objective, I will say this, we've, the Solicitor's come up with a number of recommendations. Our objective is twofold. First off, we want to make sure that every step possible is taken to ensure, again, on a proactive basis, that the library is safe, and while at the same time recognizing that there are constitutional issues that would, that a violation might result in liability to the city. And we want to be careful that, so we want to balance the need for public safety with the same, you know, careful thought that we don't want to expose the city as a corporate entity, or the city administration, or the city councilors themselves with any actions that they take, any comments that they make with any policy that's put in place that rises to the level of civil rights violation that could result in some type of a large assessment against the city as a whole or individuals. So I think the city Solicitor has come up with a number of ideas. She has spoken to people and that have talked to the Attorney General's Office about this, and I'll let her go into more details on her findings.
Excuse me, I just want to recognize Henry Marchand and Tom Moses, you were sitting right in front of me, I did recognize you, and Elliot. Okay, and then Attorney Attorney working with the city, thank you for being here. Solicitor?
Sure. As the manager indicated, we have, Law Department has looked at a number of different communities, a number of different cases directly on point, as well as in the general subject matter. Also of note, excuse me, is that Senator Eileen Donahue had contacted the Law Department with respect to the recommendation of looking at statewide legislation. And to that end, she was given a copy of the opinion, and it's my understanding from her that she has been, had meetings with the Attorney General, Martha Coakley, as well as a particular member of her staff. And while the, some of the state remedies might not be available, the Attorney General's Office is continuing to look at whether a home rule petition of some kind might be appropriate for the city as well. They, you know, they also share some of these concerns, obviously, with respect to the constitutionality of a ban. And it's my understanding that even some of the, particularly in light of the more recent case coming down last week from the SJC, some of these recommendations may need to be looked at further, to see the further implications of the SJC decision. For example, you know, other communities currently have these zones that are set up. Thank you. And even the zones under the new SJC ruling may have an implication in terms of where Level III offenders and others might be able to reside, and things of that nature. So however you want to proceed from here, I'm happy to walk you through the opinion, or what may be more productive is if you have particular questions on it and topics that you want to address, that might be a more efficient way of doing it. And the other issue I think that we're going to need to address tonight is, you know, what sort of potential next steps, and who would be making them.
Okay, I know Counsel Martin was here earlier, and he must, he just stepped out. Before I ask Counsel Elliot to weigh in on this issue, Madam Librarian, Victoria Woodley, on page two of this report, the last paragraph, "From January 1st, 2011, there have been approximately 83 incidents reports at the Pauled Memorial Library. Of these 83 incident reports, many involve ripped or damaged books, patron complaints regarding noise, and garden variety bad behavior, as well as complaints of patrons sleeping or eating in the library. Of the 83 incidents, there were two reports which referenced the presence of a sex offender in the library. In both incidents, the Lowell Police Department was immediately notified. Most recent incident involved the arrest of a Level III sex offender at the Pauled Memorial Library. The police had gone to the individual's home to arrest him on charge of assault and battery and failing to register as a sex offender. When they arrived at his home, they learned that he had gone to the library and arrested him there." The point of this question is 83 incidents over an eight-month span, that's 10 a month. Is that unusual? Is that high?
No, can you hear me? Okay. I have included, when I said, when the report here mentions items that were damaged or missing, people steal a lot of stuff from the library, and that, you know, they rip out whatever they think is identifying it, and then they can take it out through the security gates. A large part of the things are things that disappear from the library, from the stacks. So actually, not as much of it is actual people problems, most of it seems to be materials.
Before I give the microphone to Counsel Elliot, I did contact New Bedford yesterday and today, and I tried to talk to Attorney Shaw, who wrote the ordinance for New Bedford, but she wasn't available. I also contacted Somerset, that has an ordinance, but I did talk to people in City Hall at both those municipalities, and they said they haven't had a problem or a challenge on either one of those ordinances. I just want to bring that out. Counsel Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Madam Solicitor, for this report. It does outline a number of approaches which I think we should look at, not just one option, but maybe a few of them, or a myriad approach to these, especially when it comes to state, essentially to provide protection to the city, and as well as implement protections for children and seniors, or anyone else that uses the library, adolescents, the vulnerable segment of our population. I did read through this, in fact, I read through it a couple of times, because I think it is a comprehensive approach. I understand the issue of a ban, and I think in a roundabout way, whether it's implementing children or child zones, child zones that sex offenders cannot go into, filing state legislation, and even some of the local options, I understand, but, and I appreciate, but in my opinion, we have librarians to help people that visit and want to use the library, and I don't really want to see them having to enforce whether, and these are a number of options, whether it's a child, sex offender or not. I think that's, I think it's, it's just something I don't think they should have to be doing, nor do we want to be spending their time. I did notice, and I understand the Albuquerque decision that had, the city in Albuquerque completely banned anyone from that library, and it's also one to appeal. I also understand that the SJC came down with a ruling regarding nursing homes. But putting that aside, I think that we need to do anything and everything that we can to prevent sex offenders from entering that library. And if it means implementing a child zone, then we should do that. If it means, and I think we should also pursue a special act to address the number of issues that you addressed in your opinion. So, you know, it is, it is a bit frustrating, and I think you did yeoman's work to do research on, you know, First Amendment rights, but of course, where I sit, I'm more interested, and I've said this more than once, I'm more interested in protecting the rights of the children that use the library, or teenagers, or seniors. So there's one option, or there's one issue in here that I think would go a long way to keeping sex offenders out of the library, and that is prohibiting the use of patrons on the internet going to pornography sites. I don't know if that has been addressed, I don't know what the policy is, but if there isn't, we do need a policy, the same policy that prevents city employees from, whether it's that filter system. I don't see that as a constitutional right. As you do mention in your opinion, parole, the parole board, the parole board can put these restrictions on these individuals when they come out, access to internet sites, dating sites, going to pornography sites. So I don't see, I'm not an attorney, but it seems that if the parole board can attach these restrictions to individuals coming out of prison, or wherever they're coming from, then we should be able to do that. You will not view pornography, you will not frequent places, et cetera. So I think that, number one, we should pursue a special act relative to the presence of Level III in the library as one approach. Local options, I appreciate them, but I don't know how many there are, it looks like 12, 12, 13. It's all, you know, it's enforcement. How can we have, you know, limited, the staff that we have conducting their roles and responsibilities, and then trying to identify, try to keep a look on it? And don't get me wrong, I'm not criticizing, I just think there's, spending time on that is, while it's important, I think there are other ways to address that, and I think that child, make sure I get the right language, the first option that the city in New Bedford uses is the way that we should approach it. So those are my comments. I think that, at the very least, you know, maybe a combination of these options is what we should approach, and I would support those options. So those are my opinions at this particular point.
Thank you, Counsel. Madam Solicitor, on page three, can you explain that second paragraph? "In many communities where sex offenders have been banned," you wrote that, didn't you? Is that yours?
Is there a specific question?
On page three of the report.
Yep.
Second paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
"In many communities where sex offenders have been banned from public libraries, specific facts have been presented." Could you give us a, give an opinion on that?
Well, essentially...
It's almost saying that we should do something a little bit stronger than what we have.
No, what it's referring to is that there are communities that have gone forward, for example, one of the things that the, in the Albuquerque case, that they brought to the court's attention, is that there are certain times during the day that the staff would notice that there would be an increase in the number of recognized Level III sex offenders, and that their appearance would coincide with the increase of students in the library that were getting out of school. And what the court was sort of focusing on is that, first of all, that's an actual problem that the community is trying to address. In our case, we fortunately really don't have those types of facts, there are no specific instances that this would be aimed at. And the goal, obviously, because there are clear constitutional issues involved, is that whatever restrictions the counsel were to be, to put into effect, they would have to be narrowly tailored, and they would have to be designed to cure a specific ill. And so that's, in part, what was being, what was being addressed in that, in that second paragraph that you asked about.
Frankie?
A couple other things, actually, if I may. The, as far as the New Bedford, the fact that there was no appeals, obviously, really has, has no bearing at all on any, on any legal analysis. It just simply means no one has taken the time, or has been adversely affected to the point that they want to challenge it. However, we do know that that was not the case in Albuquerque, and in fact, Albuquerque was fashioned after the New Bedford law. We do have the benefit and the guidance of a federal decision on the New Mexico case, and that's something, obviously, that we can't put the blinders on and ignore. It also seems to be in keeping with the most recent decision from our SJC, which, in the case of nursing homes, the SJC found that, that some of these things should be done, really, on a case-by-case basis, that there should be specific facts attached to specific individuals if you're going to deny them rights, again, that rise to a constitutional level. And I think as time goes on, the SJC decision will have an effect on some of these other ordinances that are cropping up across the Commonwealth, such as New Bedford, and this idea of creating zones where sex offenders might not be able to live. One of the things that has been noted by, well, our own Attorney General's Office, as well as others, and I referenced it in this report, is that all the good intentions of, say, a counsel, or others in law enforcement to come up with these regulations, that unfortunately, some of them begin to have an adverse effect, and that is, it, there is a statistical correlation between an increase in various regulations on, say, Level III sex offenders, and a decline in the registration. And that's something that, again, others have been sort of keeping an eye on and trying to, trying to keep in check. As far as, oh, one other point, as far as the parole board that Counsel Elliot had brought up, again, the reason that a parole board, as I noted in there, does have more powers, but the reason it does is because, obviously, the individuals are on parole. You can be a Level III sex offender, but not be on parole. And so, you know, as you look at the issues, they become, there's many layers to them, and they become, they become fairly complex. But in looking at it, what I tried to look at was a number of different avenues to sort of get at what the counsel is clearly trying to do, which is quite simply to put regulations in place that will make the library, or any place, as safe as possible for patrons.
Very interesting, on page four, Madam Solicitor, the very last paragraph, it's number 10, and this is in New Bedford, the city of New Bedford.
Mm-hmm.
"Prior to implementing the ordinance, New Bedford had a problem with the Level II or III hanging out in the library. An offender was given a no trespass order, but did not afford the former patron and sex offender with a hearing. Following a legal challenge, there was a finding that the individual was denied his Fourteenth Amendment rights of due process. Ultimately, the city paid him $60,000 as a result." That was prior to implementing an ordinance. The city of New Bedford went ahead and implemented an ordinance, and no one has even challenged that.
No, it's, if I may, it's, it really has no bearing on the fact of whether or not you have an ordinance, it really has a bearing on the fact of whether or not a hearing and due process rights were afforded. There's many ways of coming up in this type of proceeding with a constitutional violation. One of those ways is a violation of due process. In our case, our library staff and our Board of Trustees ensures that before somebody ultimately loses their library privileges, that they are, in fact, if they choose, they are offered and afforded an opportunity to have a full hearing. And that's really the narrow issue that was, that was happening, apparently, in New Bedford.
I think...
An ordinance doesn't cure that, in other words.
I think what's on the conscience and the mind of the Subcommittee and the counsel is, how can we make it better? How can we make present policy stronger? How can we assure parents and children that they go there, there's not going to be a problem? That's, that's the issue before us. How can we make that happen?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the, I think the way we make that happen, and again, is the Solicitor, and I can't say enough about the work that Solicitor did on this, the way we make that happen is to put in place these types of programs, these type of procedures, these type of practices, and, you know, work with the legislature on more of a statewide, that's, I think, is really the ultimate solution, but with our own library staff and our Board of Trustees, put in place these procedures that would guarantee that. Now, I will say, and Solicitor and I have had some discussions about this on a more global perspective, I think one thing that we want to be cautious of, too, is, and the notion that people, I want to be careful how I say this, that the library as it stands now is a very, very safe place to be. Is there a risk? Yes, there's a risk. There's a risk, just like if you were to go to a McDonald's, to a, to a shopping mall, any number of other locations, that something might happen. And even if the City Council, even if it was allowed that the City Council could put a ban in place, people should not be, not believe that their children or anyone is totally safe anywhere. People still have to be vigilant, and because people don't, you know, people can come in that, like, in the particular case of the individual that was arrested at the library, they weren't doing anything, but, except being there, but if you note, as the opinion presents, they were not registered as a sex offender. So therefore, we would never have stopped that individual from coming into the library, even if we had a ban.
Didn't he take a bracelet on up his ankle?
No, that was a separate case.
It's a separate case?
That was a separate case, it was not, there was a whole other array of issues there, and we can speak to that if you'd like.
We had two then, in the library?
We've had two sex offenders in the library. Counsel, we've probably had many more in the library, just like we've had them in this building, just like we've had them any number of other places, and I guess that's my point. I think the procedures and the practices that the Solicitor has recommended are the way to go, to guarantee that we, we take additional steps, as the counsel has asked us to do, at the same time, guarantee that it's something that will stand up and not expose the city to any liability. But even with all of that, people need to be vigilant, everywhere, at all times, for any number of problems, including sex offenders.
Counsel Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Manager, we'll agree to disregard on this, on this point. The library is becoming a safer place. I mean, there's clearly incidences, there's, there's a past history of problems at the library, which is, even prior to your time, outside the library, which is why we're here. I think that the counsel has taken on issues and brought them to your attention, and they're, they're being addressed. And I think this is a proactive approach to letting the public know that, not only in Lowell, but communities throughout the Commonwealth, and out the country, throughout the country, quite frankly, have problems with sex offenders going to libraries. And it made it all the way to the SJC, that's how much of an issue is. I think that we should proceed with child zone, to let parents and the public know that this, yes, they have to be vigilant, I agree. However, we're taking every precaution that we can on our end to make sure that these offenders, and what I thought was interesting is, we continue to talk about Level III, or I do, these cases include Level II, or the ordinances or the laws includes Level II, and I think we should also include that as well. I think we achieve the same goal of keeping sex offenders out of the library as other communities have with the child safety zone, because as the state law, as Solicitor indicated, the state law prohibits sex offenders from going into schools and to other, at the very least, schools. And this, in large part, the library is an extension of the school. Kids leave school, they have homework, they have research, they go from, whether it's, you know, the high school, you know, a couple hundred yards down the street, right to the library, so in large part, it's an extension of that school. Creating this as a child free zone still achieves the goal of keeping them out of the library, and I think that's a very good approach. The second approach of filing a special act provides the state support that Solicitor indicates that we should pursue. So I would like to make the motion that the Solicitor draw the appropriate ordinance to create these child zones, child safety zones at the library, and, you know, any other appropriate, does reference playgrounds. I'm wondering if we should, we should include the senior center, I know that's not a child safety zone, but I know that there's, the Counsel Mercy brought up the issue, there's, there were some challenges there. But at the least, come back with an, draw up an ordinance to address, to create these zones, to prevent Level II and Level III sex offenders from going to the library and playground as well. So that would be the first motion, Mr. Chairman, and I also would like to suggest... So, that would be the first motion, Mr. Chairman, and I also would like to suggest, maybe in a second motion, that we have the Solicitor draw up the appropriate home rule petition as outlined in the, in a memorandum to submit to the state for that second layer or that, that second added level of protection.
Repeat the first motion, Counsel. Just briefly.
That the city Solicitor draw up the appropriate ordinance to create child safety zones for, for the library. And any other locations--
Then I'll second that motion.
On the motion.
May I ask a question before we vote on that motion? Yes? Okay, thank you. Madam Solicitor, thank you very much for the presentation and the information. I just have a question about the child safety zones. What is the difference between the New Bedford approach, which you don't necessarily know is constitutional, and what you have listed under our recommendations instituted a child safety zone that includes the library?
The, the difference would be a, regardless of whatever you call it, the difference really boils down to an outright ban versus, again, more measured responses, more narrowly tailored, but nevertheless specifically aimed and designed at achieving the exact same result. And, and it's really the latter that would have the greater chance of, of surviving scrutiny and, and also balancing it out with constitutional protections. That's part of the responsibility as well.
Thank you. Counsel Elliot, is your motion intended to address her recommendation?
Correct.
Yes? Okay.
Just a question. So, as far as the, the zones, is it intended to be essentially an outright ban similar to New Bedford, or to begin to explore some of the other restrictive measures that can, that the city could take, and, again, that are designed to, to have the same effect?
Well, I, I, I think the city of New Bedford's current zoning seems like it would be pretty effective. They do include recreation centers, playgrounds, libraries, school day centers, private use centers. It, to me, it would make some sense why we're implementing this ordinance to include, and it continues, gymnasiums, sports fields, sports facilities, as well as the parking areas, any land around those facilities, schools, bus, bus stops. I think that would be the more appropriate or comprehensive approach, rather than coming back saying, you know, the, okay, we got them out of the library, but now they're at other areas where, you know, children congregate. I mean, I didn't even think, you know, swimming pools, how many swimming pools do we have? So--
Yeah, there's an unending list that, that, of, of public as well as, not that you have control over private, but of places where children would congregate. You know, one of the things in the opinion that I had referenced has, since that time, been struck by the SJC as, as violating the Constitution, as well as the Massachusetts Constitution as well. And so, as far as the, as far as the zones, you're, you're looking to, to enact a complete ban on, on allowing, say, a level three or possibly even a level two, which I think Deputy Friedel might be able to speak to the level two and how that might play out in terms of the, the requirements on level two sex offenders and notification procedures, which are not quite the same as level three. Level three, I think the library staff has more access to information than they would for levels two and certainly level one.
Level three is the greatest, provides, presents the greatest risk of reoffending, and--
Clearly.
Level two, while not as great, still poses a--
Still there.
Significant risk. So, I personally think that we should include level two. I mean, personally, you know, I know they come out in other restrictions, but they're, they're criminals, and they pose this great risk to this vulnerable population, particularly the children or, and I include, you know, seniors. So, whatever we have to do, whatever ordinances that we need to put in place to provide the highest level of protection for, for the vulnerable population, I, I believe that we should. So, that would include, you know, those other areas, and at what point, it seems like the New Bedford ordinance includes areas where children are most likely to congregate or participate in, in activities, so--
Counsel, Counsel Elliot, why couldn't we just adopt the New Bedford ordinance? Wouldn't that make it simpler and easier?
I think that's what I was suggesting, that the, that the Solicitor look at--
Or something similar. It's true.
It essentially, it, I was a bit confused myself in hearing the discussion, because it appeared that the subcommittee was heading in the direction of the Solicitor's opinion, recognizing the, the difficulties withstanding a constitutional challenge and the liability that would come to the city and the council by that action, as well as the difficulty of enforcement. But now it seems like, if, if that's the direction, it is basically the New Bedford ordinance. And, you know, and I find myself in an awkward position here, because I certainly don't want to come across as being, you know, a supporter of sex offenders, or, 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 or an apologist, or whatever the term you want to use, but I do think we have to be careful here as to what the city, how the city moves forward with this, to make sure that it's something that can be upheld on a challenge and not expose the city to tremendous liability. The other issue that the Solicitor just talked about, though, I think is, is very significant, and I, and I understand the, the level two sex offender issue, but level two sex offenders, and Deputy Friedel can speak to this, but they are not required to register. And if we start putting, this is the whole point that Solicitor raised at the outset, if we start putting in these restrictions to, to level, to level two sex offenders, the, the risk we run is that people will stop registering. We will lose track of these people. That is what we want more than anything else. The whole notion of registration of sex offenders is so that we can keep track of them. If suddenly that goes away, we've defeated what we've been trying to, as a Commonwealth, we've defeated what we've been trying to accomplish. So, I, I, I think, there are several different issues here that I think are significant. I want an ordinance, I want a policies that's going to help us solve the problem, not exacerbate the problem, and I also want something that we can win on if it's challenged, not just for the, the liability reasons, but also so that we then can continue a policy that's enforceable and not lose the policy that we might, that might make the most, might make the most sense for the city.
I want to recognize Deputy Superintendent Deborah Friedel.
Just with regard to the level twos and the level threes, the level twos are deemed to be moderate risk of reoffending, and the level threes, high risk of reoffending. Obviously, with the level threes, there's a mandate on the part of law enforcement to proactively notify the community of a level three sex offender. So, both the level twos and the level threes are required to register with us. They're both required to register. It's just sort of the, the, our ability to share information with the public about, and other entities in the city, not just public. But, for example, what comes to mind is, as you had the discussion, if we were to be in offenders from city playgrounds, for example, I'm, don't believe that we would have the ability to share the information with Parks and Recreation of who the list of level two sex offenders are in the city. We may not be able to compile a list and share that information. But with the level threes, absolutely, not only can we, we're expected to provide that information. So, it's readily available on the level threes, or all the photos and their information is available right on our website. There are 79, as of today, there are 79 level three sex offenders. There are more level twos in the city, I don't have the exact number, but there are more level twos than there are level threes. So, we can share information on level twos, but the way it's designed is, a citizen would have to come into the police department, identify themselves, and note why it is they need that information, and then it has to be specific. We can't just show them a list of all level twos in the city. We can show them, you know, if they're inquiring about a particular street or a particular address or something in their immediate vicinity around their home, then we can share that information, and we keep a record of who we've given that information to. So, it's, it's a little bit more restrictive on our end in terms of what we can do with the information.
If I may, this subcommittee has been extremely patient through everything that's come across our desk, and the perfect example of, of that is the Pitbull ordinance. We had many, many meetings. Nothing is going to be finalized tonight on this issue. It's a very, very important, important issue for the city and the residents who utilize the library and so forth. What I'd like to do is, is take a roll call on Counsel Elliot's motion and have the Solicitor bring back a draft for the next meeting, so we can look at that. And then also, we're going to take a look at the recommendations you brought forward. And what I'm looking for, as one individual, is the best possible way of preventing, preventing sex offenders from offending anyone in that library. And that's, that's, I think that's our goal. But how do we reach that goal? It's, you know, we have, I think, put our thinking caps on and come up with a solution. Victoria?
Yes, I'd also like to say that the trustees will be meeting again in September, and we'd like to put forth our own opinions on what we think would work and not work, because at least with my help, the trustees will know what kinds of things are possible to do procedurally in the library that would, would be effective. So, we'd like to inject, you know, our opinions on what restrictions we think might work and not work, too.
Okay. Counsel Deco, do you want to speak on Counsel Elliot's motion?
Yes, please. Thank you. I would just like to be clear, because although we all care deeply about this issue, I do think we need to make sure that we are not violating policies that are going to hurt the city in the long run. And so, I would prefer to see this motion actually go as far as possible to implementing this child safety zone without crossing over any lines, and then if it's not enough, then we can come back and address it. But clearly, the people are here, we're here, this is an important issue, and we all have the same objective. So, I just need to clarify with you, Counsel Elliot, where, where this is actually standing because, for my vote.
Well, I don't think we're crossing any line. I, I guess I'm getting confused now. We have an opinion from the Solicitor that indicates the better approach, short of a complete ban of level three sex offenders, is to go through these child safety zones, similar to those zones that are created in the New Bedford ordinance. The New Bedford ordinance includes swimming pools, playgrounds, libraries, et cetera. I also believe it includes level two. So, I understand the issue of liability, but other communities have put bans in place, and they're just challenged. So, I'm more interested in putting in, an ordinance that is going to, of course, it doesn't have to be challenged, anything can be challenged at any given point in time. But according to you, Madam Solicitor, the city of New Bedford's ordinance hasn't been challenged. It does provide restrictions or, or the restrictions that we're looking for, and at the same time not violate the First or Fourteenth Amendments that are being challenged in, in the Albuquerque, New Mexico case.
Sorry, thanks. The New Mexico case is the New Bedford ordinance. They did essentially what New Bedford did. That's what they, that's what they based it on. In fact, even the motivation for enacting it in, in New Mexico was based on the incident in New Bedford. That's what they were relying on. So, and the, the New Bedford approach is one of a, of a total ban. I think what I was saying with New Bedford is that the mayor of New Bedford was indicating that New Bedford wasn't going as far as other communities. Some communities have gone very far. Some states have gone very far. States like Florida, for example, have restricted sex offenders to the point where some communities, there are very few opportunities for them to find any sort of residence whatsoever. The result of that, again, has been noted by various law enforcement agencies, is that unfortunately, what might be steps that are taken with the best of intentions end up having results that, that the communities don't want, and that has resulted in sex offenders not, not registering and things of the like. But the approach of New Bedford is not what I was recommending. What I was recommending was a, again, a more narrow, more tailored approach that attempts to achieve the same types of protections that New Bedford is looking to achieve, but does so in a way that is not constitutionally repugnant, which I think the New Bedford case is.
Okay, it's twenty--
Well, what is that narrowing and tailored approach? What is that?
Well, the narrow--
The options that listed, that the, the library is going to do that?
Yes.
Oh, I don't, I mean, I appreciate those, but I, I don't think that serves the purpose at all, it's to the degree that, that I'm looking at. Having librarians enforced as to keep an eye and to post things, et cetera, et cetera, I mean, I thought those were perhaps, in addition to the New Bedford approach, in addition to filing special legislation, not that in itself, having the librarians do that work. I don't, I don't support that.
Right.
In, in itself.
The, the librarians wouldn't necessarily be doing the work. I think no matter what regulation the council, whatever direction the council heads, there is going to be a certain amount of responsibility that will fall upon librarians. For example, in the New Bedford approach, people would have to be vigilant about making sure that someone who is a level three sex offender is not allowed in. Exactly how that's done is, you know, remains to be seen. The, I mean, the other thing to keep in mind, again, and something that the manager touched upon, in terms of these sort of seemingly easy remedies, they're really not that easy at all. Any, I would submit that anybody who would go in and rape a six-year-old, we have laws on the book that prevent people from doing that, those laws didn't work, and ordinance is going to fall far short of the kind of effect that, that our criminal laws have. And so, the, the approach that, that I was suggesting, that be, that be looked at, not only by the council but also by the Board of Trustees, is an approach that would, that would engage level three sex offenders and put certain responsibilities on them, but also on, on library staff, so that they are put on notice of the presence of a level three sex offender in the library, and can be in a better position to take, to take steps to better monitor and prevent something unfortunate from happening.
With all the, I just have one more. With all the respect, if we have trouble having sex offenders register in the city, and there was, and it is a problem, or they've registered or so, I don't think it's reasonable to expect them to check in at the front desk. I don't think it's reasonable for, to expect them to get a restricted library card and some of the other items. I, I just don't think that's a practical approach to solving this problem.
But likewise, if I may, Counsel, likewise, it, it's not reasonable to assume that putting up a sign that says--
Can't come in.
--sex, level three sex offenders, level two and level three not allowed, isn't likely to do that either. What we're, I, I, frankly, I think that the fact that, you know, putting these other systems in place would, would require, I mean, you do need a library card to use the computers. And we can, when people come in and they have to get their library card, we can, we can flag those and say, this is a sex offender that should not have access, regular access to a, to a, to a computer. This is, you know, we can take these steps to make sure that it's something that can be, you know, something that can be implemented.
Okay, it's getting almost twenty-five past six. And Counsel Martin, Counsel Mercy has a question, but I just want to follow up with, with this. Madam Solicitor, the recommendations you have here, can you put that in the form of an ordinance?
I mean, they ultimately could, although I would need some assistance from, from the library staff and, and also--
In the form of an ordinance?
We could do it in the form of an ordinance, absolutely.
So, you, we would have an ordinance, then?
We could certainly have an ordinance, and it would be one that I think would be, would put us in much better shape than just, just a flat-out ban. The other thing I was going to suggest to the council, if, if this is something that you're interested in--
Madam Solicitor, we just can't, we don't have that much time.
This is very, I'll be very brief. The, another possibility is that, given the fact that apparently the Attorney General's Office, along with Senator Donahue, is, is looking at this larger issue in terms of state, state remedy, they, they would likely be available to come in and have a further follow-up meeting with the, with the council, and, and also address some of these issues from, from their perspective. And again, they're, they're constantly working on this issue, they were involved in the, in the most recent issue with the SJC, and, and they will continue to, it's an issue that's important to them, and, and Senator-- issue that's important to them, and, uh, and Senator Donahue has also been, um, been very active in working on it as well.
Okay, uh, Mr. Clerk, roll call on Counsel Elliot's motion. Yes?
No.
Point of clarification, um, my motion is to draft an ordinance similar to the one in New Bedford.
Aye.
Okay, I, I clearly, clearly support mine. All right, yes.
Now, I would also like to make a motion for the clerk, uh, for the solicitor to draft a ordinance pertaining to all these regulations and put it in an ordinance form. The police department would have it, the council would have it, everyone would have copy of this ordinance. Roll call. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, before we recess, we're going to recess. We're not taking any votes tonight, we're, we're going through a long process of trying to come up with something that's, that we can hang our hat on and is a very important issue, and we don't want to make the mistake. And I think that's why we're dotting the I across and the T. Counsel Martin, the counsel?
Sorry, I just want a second, Counsel Elliot's second motion.
Okay, the other, the other motion I suggested is that the solicitor, and I agree, I think that we should pursue, uh, working with Senator Donahue and, and our state delegation to draft some home rule, to draft home rule legislation, um, relative to, uh, the sex offender issue that were, that's before us and, um, let me get the exact language, Madam Solicitor. Well, I, I guess, the special act relative to the presence of level three sex offenders in libraries throughout the Commonwealth.
Roll call? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
My, my question was the same as yours, Mr. Chairman, why some of these recommendations couldn't be incorporated in the form of an ordinance?
At, at least we'll have something...
Does say the, the city or the trustees could place these restrictions on, I assume if the city council's doing it, it could be by ordinance form.
Absolutely.
Counsel Mercy?
There's a lack of time, I'll just bypass that.
Well, go ahead.
Uh, I'm just thinking that all is well when we talk about the sex offenders and, and I'm, I certainly don't coddle to them, I, I have no desire to be sympathetic with them at all because, and I don't really care about violating their rights. Their rights were violated when they, uh, you know, violated the rights of innocent people, but be that as it may, I know the city is concerned about lawsuits, but those that are getting, um, preyed upon anywhere could sue the city, but, but the thing that I want to im- impress is that even though we have things in place, you can be in a room with a hundred people, it could be three sex offenders, and how do you know that? It's not written on their face, they don't look any different than anybody else, there could be one in this room for all we know, and we're putting a big burden on library officials to, to do the, you know, to monitor this. I think what we have to do is to talk to the legislature. I know that one of the conditions of parole in the judicial system is that those that are convicted of, uh, sexual assault and convicted are asked to wear a monitor through the duration of their parole, which could be for years and years. Therefore, when they do go and they would, and they're told to stay away from these particular areas, if they go through these areas, then they can be arrested and violated and sent to prison. Uh, these are the things that we have to work with, with laws that strengthen the type of, uh, people that prey on innocent people. I think that's where it is. I don't want to put a zone in place thinking to the public that you're free of these sexual predators because you're not, and that, I wanted to stress that.
Are there any other councils who want to weigh in on this issue? I entertain a motion to recess. We will convene at the next meeting in two weeks, and I think we'll start that meeting at 5:00 PM. Motion to recess by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Dakota. All in favor, signify by saying aye. It's, uh, recess for two weeks.